The hearing for Hearing Stream Three has been reconvened this morning. Today is a fairly full-on day for submitters and topics, although we have had some changes in schedules, mainly due to illnesses that seem to be striking a lot of people at the moment. Today's topics will be network utilities, renewable energy, transport, stormwater, open space, natural open space, and sports and active recreation, although the latter had very few submissions on it, so we won't be really hearing about that today. I won't go through the schedule because that's a changing thing. So we will first open up with the reporting officers on those topics, and I'll very shortly hand over. Other than that, we have a mixture of online and in-person presenters today. And so we'll just have the opening statements from the reporting officers, and then we'll turn to Maria Roberts to come up to the submitter table and talk to us on the submissions. So who do we have first? Ms Lawson, do we have? Would you like to start?
Morning everyone. My name is Lily Lawson, and I am employed as an associate planner at Barker and Associates, and as a consultant planner to Napier City Council and the reporting officer for the Network Utilities Chapter on the PDP. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Urban Planning with Honors. I have over eight years' experience working as a resource management planner, including various resource management positions in local government, levy organisations, and private consultancy. I was not involved in the drafting of the Network Utilities Chapter, but prepared the Section 42A report for the matters relating to all network utilities provisions. I would be happy to take any questions that you may have at the end of my statement. Twenty submitters raised over three hundred submission and further submission points in relation to the Network Utilities Chapter. The submission raised points in relation to most aspects of the Network Utilities Chapter, as well as some definitions. I expand on the key themes of submissions in my recommendations below, and comment generally on whether the matter has been pursued in evidence. At the time my opening statement was published, I was aware that evidence had been received by the following parties: Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, Kiwi Rail, the telecommunications companies, and Transpower. Since then, I am aware that evidence has also been received by Sarah Chambers, Hawke's Bay Regional Council, and Unison. In addition to the evidence received, the Department of Conservation have submitted a letter of support to the proposed changes to the Network Utilities Chapter. In particular, they agree that the chapter should not be read in isolation from other chapters. New Zealand Transport Agency also agrees with the Section 42A recommendations, and have not pursued any matters further through evidence. I have reviewed to this evidence, and will consider that presented here today to inform a position to be circulated after the hearing and my officer's reply. Plan structure introduction and issues. Transpower sought that the Network Utilities Chapter be amended so that it is self-contained. The telecommunications companies made a similar submission. My position remains that the relocation of all network utilities provisions to the Network Utilities Chapter would not result in a more effective or efficient plan. Using earthworks as an example, it is my opinion that people undertaking the activity of earthworks are more likely to seek direction on the controls within Earthworks Chapter, and therefore rules relating to earthworks within the National Grid Yard are more appropriate located there. However, Mr Anderson, on behalf of the telecommunications companies, has helpfully provided further evidence and suggested wording to provide greater clarity on what chapters apply to network utilities. I've copied it there below, but won't read it out. Ms Whitney from Transpower suggested further wording, and I support the intent of both of these suggestions and proposed additions, and consider they provide additional clarity and enhances plan usability. Other changes requested to the introduction included reference to the NPECT and recognition of the airport as a network utility. The former has been pursued through evidence. The change sought to the issues of the Network Utilities Chapter by Transpower sought the inclusion of operational need, which was consistent with the wording used throughout the provisions. The submissions received on objectives related to Objective One and Objective Two, with the exception of Forests and Birds submission to delete and relocate to a policy the recognition of functional or operational need, the amendments sought provided clarity inconsistent with the policy and rule framework. Changes were sought to Policies One to Six. Based on submissions, I have recommended a number of changes to the policies. The changes ensure the policies achieve the objectives of their new chapter, are more concise, and provide greater direction for managing the effects on and of network utilities. In relation to P Six, the changes ensure consistency with the National Policy Statement for electricity transmission. Rules. The submissions received on the Network Utilities rules sought clarification and consistency with national planning documents, and changes to the matters of discretion. Where these changes are considered to be more effective and efficient achieving the objectives of the plan and higher-order documents, they have been accepted and recommended. Three new rules were sought. The rule relating to customer connections to heritage buildings and earthworks within the National Grid Yard have been assessed in the relevant Section 42A report as part of Hearing Stream One and Two. I did not support the new rule sought by the telecommunications companies to provide for activities which did not meet the relevant permitted regulation of the NESTF, but note, Mr Anderson has provided further evidence in detail regarding this rule, and I will consider that put forward today. The submissions received on the NU standards were broad-ranging. Where these changes were assessed to provide greater consistency with higher-order documents or greater clarity on the applicability of the rule, these were recommended to be accepted. A number of changes were also recommended to matters of discretion where these were considered to better achieve the purpose of the rule and the objective and policies of their new chapter. Appendix A included recommended changes to a number of definitions. These changes are considered to provide greater clarity and/or consistency with national planning documents. I note that Unison also continued to seek a definition for customer connections. In my published statement, I indicated that a pre-hearing meeting would take place with Ms Robotham in relation to the relief sought to manage the potential effects of bird strike through provisions in the Network Utilities Chapter. Ms Robotham and I met yesterday afternoon, and I can update the panel that there was agreement in principle that provisions to manage the potential effects of bird strike were necessary to achieve a number of objectives, including NU Objective Three, and that it was likely that the most efficient and effective location for these provisions was within the Network Utilities Chapter. Locating these provisions in the NU chapter may negate the need to include provisions in each zone located within a three-kilometre radius from the airport, which is the bird strike management area sought by HBAL, the distance of which, I understand, is based on international standards. While Ms Robotham has not provided any specific wording, we discuss those included in the Christchurch Plan and which are included as an attachment to Ms Robotham's evidence from page one hundred and fifty. These provisions manage discrete activities within the bird strike management area. In terms of next steps, Ms Robotham and I, oh, Ms Robotham will circulate draft provisions. Points of agreement and disagreements will then be included in my officer's reply. We consider it necessary also to include those reporting offices of the zone where the relief has been sought as part of the discussion. You may recall from yesterday's hearing that Hawke's Bay Airport Limited have proposed a standard at Te Fanganui Aro Two Zone. Ms Rayburn, on behalf of the Ahuriri Regional Joint Park Committee, was also supportive of this provision. Ms Robotham and I agreed that, given the purpose and location of the Te Fanganui Aro Two Zone, a specific approach to this zone to manage bird strike rather than relying on those provisions sought to the NU chapter was warranted. Ms Robotham and I also discussed the word, the use of the word method, which was queried by the panel in relation to the recommended changes to the third paragraph of the introduction. We have reflected that method is not the most accurate word to use, and will provide agreed updated wording in the officer's reply. Issues pursued through evidence. A number of matters continue to be pursued through evidence, and these are bullet-pointed at my paragraph twenty-six. I will confirm my position in the officer's reply once hearing the discussion and evidence today. However, I can indicate that I am supportive in principle of the following substantive matters raised. Amendments or deletion of NU R four to clarify how network utilities are provided for in the airport zone pursued by HBAL and telecommunications companies. Amendments to NU R eleven and specifically the standards required to be complied with to better recognise the temporary nature of the activities the rule provides for. Obstacle limitation surfaces required in NU S three and the requirement for this to be prepared by a certifiably qualified person, and amendments to the permitted pole heights to enable poles higher than the maximum permitted height in the underlying zone. A bespoke framework to manage bird strike. The provision of vehicular access is sought by Transpower to NU R five and NU R thirteen. Remaining areas of contention include the building footprint in NU S four, pursued by Transpower, Unison, and telecommunications companies. New rule for antennas which do not comply with permitted activity standards on the NESTF. NU R two and the requirement for new electricity structures to be within five metres of the existing location, although I will consider the alternative of ten metres put forward by Unison. NU R six requirement for electrical lines to be underground. NU S ten requirement for electricity lines to have a maximum voltage of one hundred and ten, and that they are attached to a bridge. I've just noted a couple of corrections there as well, and the panel raised a number of questions, and I have included a response and recommended changes at my Attachment A.
Just a quick question. Can you, are you able to summarise what you think the outstanding matters in contention are between yourselves and the submitters at the moment?
Yes, sure. So those are the building footprint and Standard Four, which was sought, continued to be pursued by Transpower, Unison, and telecommunications companies. The telecommunications companies seek a new controlled activity status rule for antennas which do not comply with permitted activity standards on the NESTF. Unison continue to pursue changes to Rule Two and the requirement for new electricity structures to be within five metres of the existing location, and they've proposed a ten-metre alternative. Unison seek changes to Rule Six and the requirement for electrical lines to be underground. And I believe it's Unison as well that, who seek changes to Standard Ten and the requirement for electricity lines to have a maximum voltage of, sorry, they seek changes to Standard Ten to remove the requirement for electricity lines to have a maximum voltage of one hundred and ten and be attached to a bridge.
Thank you for that, it's helpful. And just one other question at the moment. The list, you're in agreement in principle about listing other matters outside the network utility provisions that may be relevant with hyperlinks. Do you have any sense how complicated that may be? How many rules and how many provisions would need to be hyperlinked at all?
I can't speak for other chapters, but I've been involved in the earthworks, and I'm also aware of subdivision and heritage provisions which would apply. But Ms Anderson has helpfully done that analysis so far, and there seems to be seven chapters which would apply.
So is that seven chapters or seven provisions to hyperlink to? Is it just linking to chapters and then the user can figure out?
He has suggested a link to chapters, yes.
Right, not specific rules or anything?
Yeah, Transpower, Ms Whitney from Transpower took a different approach and enlisted the earthworks rule reference, but that was only in relation to earthworks rather than all other chapters that applied.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel? Rosalind?
Thank you very much, Ms Lawson. I just had a question in regard to NU Rule Twelve B. That's where Corus has requested the addition of the additional matter for discretion number four, adding the functional or operational need for the infrastructure to be in the zone. And I was just interested in your assessment, obviously the intention of that rule was to control activities in those special zones, and given the interaction with other legislations, say the Electricity Act, what's your view on including that?
So that was NU R four, did you say?
Uh, NU R twelve.
Oh, twelve, sorry.
Sorry.
notified version was incorrect. Sorry, can you please just repeat your question? I've found where I am now.
Thank you. No, my question is just in regards to the introduction of that new matter for discretion number four, which appears to sort of be a capture rule to include, you know, assessments around the functional or operational requirements for the infrastructure to be located in that zone. But I just wanted your assessment of the requirement for that being that there is the interaction, of course, with, say, the Electricity Act that would allow the introduction of those for those reasons, and bearing in mind the purpose of that rule was to essentially protect those special natural zones.
Yes, I consider that that addition would better achieve the objectives of the NU chapter, which recognises the operational and functional needs, but I can certainly look into it further, particularly the interaction with the higher-order planning documents.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vindal, can I?
Oh, look, can you just circulate a updated version of your opening? You added quite a lot of verbal material that wasn't in the pre-circulated written document, and I don't think we've received your updated written version yet.
Yes, no problem at all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the panel? No, no, thank you. Ms Wilson? So, Ms Mills?
So I've got both renewable energy and the transport chapters to presume our opening statements today. I'll start with transport first. So my name is Connie Mills, I'm employed as Strategic Planning Lead with Napier City Council. I am a planner, I've got qualifications in a Masters of Planning from Otago. I've got over eight years of experience working as a resource management planner, including in local government, central government agencies, and then also for consultancy. I was involved in the review of the PDP since March of two thousand and twenty-four, but I did not draft the transport chapter. I have prepared the Section 42A report. In total, there was a hundred and thirty-eight submission points for transport and a further sixty-eight further submission points. The themes vary widely. We've got definitions, road hierarchy and classification, trip generation, access, parking loading, freight, micro-mobility, safety, connectivity, and intensification concerns. So we didn't hold any formal pre-hearing meetings, however, we did exchange a few emails with some submitters to see if we can reach a conclusion before the hearing. And so this has been with Wauhukutahie or NZTA, Guy Pankurs from Survey in the Bay, and Todd Dawson from the Port of Napier. I have reviewed all the pre-circulated submitter evidence. I've read this evidence, and I'm prepared to respond to any questions raised. Of note, I think my thinking has further developed since I drafted the Section 42A report, particularly in regard to provision Standard S seven, which is trip generation. So this drew quite a lot of attention from submitters and their evidence, and I think there's absolutely some opportunity here to go and review the non-residential activities thresholds, and I wonder if there's opportunity to work with Golden Bay, Port of Napier, Mana Ahuriri Trust, and also Hawke's Bay Airport, which I didn't list in my opening statement, but it's correction. The other part that I think may be helpful to the panel today is just where the outstanding issues lay. They're pretty bespoke. We've got one to do with emergency access being balanced with housing intensification. In my forty-two report, I was neutral on this. I think there is absolutely balance to be struck here with the relief that Kaurangor Order and Mana Ahuriri Trust are seeking with fire and emergency in New Zealand. And then the other one was the trip generation. There's minor matters to be resolved, which is largely around the cross-discipline hyperlinking matter throughout the plan, which Lily has just previously spoken to. I'm open to any questions before I move on to renewable energy.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Minor point in your paragraph five, you refer to the subdivision chapter, was that an error?
That was an error, sorry.
So that should be transport chapter?
That's correct.
And you say that you're seeking our approval to, or our endorsement for you to work with submitters regarding PPTS seven. What sort of changes are you envisaging as a result of that?
So I'm really in infancy thinking. I've been only leading up to the hearing, so I'm really trying to play catch-up here. But the three points I thought we could consider further was enabling a growth standard there, and that's to envisage, like, to give our community confidence that, yes, we know that we want industrial growth in Napier, and that aligns with our wider strategic outcomes. So maybe like a hard limit on trip generation is quite difficult to achieve, so whether we say, hey, over the plan's life, say, ten years, that that trip generation threshold actually increases by ten percent before resource consent is necessary, and that particularly helps the port and the Hawke's Bay Airport respond to their aspirations too. Yeah, if there's higher tolerance in more commercial zones than perhaps I had initially thought in the forty-two report, and that's just looking at the location of, like, large format retail predominantly off Prebince and Drive, that that corridor could probably tolerate a few more trips, but I'd really like to work with our transport team at NZTA, considering we've got both state highway and local roads leading into those environments.
So in a nutshell, you're considering higher thresholds in some areas that don't adversely affect the safe and efficient operation of the network?
That's correct.
Okay. That is all, thanks, Robert.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms Mills. Just one question around a definition. I think in our policies, we refer to the consistency with one network framework, but one network framework isn't included in our definitions, should it be?
I think that's a really good point, and we should be including it in our framework and our definitions. We've noticed that there's an error in what we notified in so far, is that our road hierarchy map is based on old terminology, and it doesn't reflect the one network framework. That question came up as a panel question, and I don't think we're in a position to actually adopt that one network framework without a minor amendment that we're doing in our wrap-up hearing, so I wonder if we could include the definition at that time that we update the maps.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The only question is sort of related to the updating of Appendix eighteen.
Yeah.
It's still not available, she's clarified. I'm just wondering if there are natural justice issues, is it appropriate to leave it to the wrap-up hearing?
Can I get back to you on that one? I've got thinking both ways on it.
I'm just thinking that, should it be updated, you know, well before the wrap-up hearing, should we address it at that point through a memorandum or something, just to make sure that's covered off before we leave it to the last moment in case?
I would love to take your direction on that one, I think.
Yeah.
Any opportunity for us to resolve it has got to be a good one.
Right, okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Any other questions on transport? Thank you. Renewable energy?
Excellent, so I'll skip the preamble. Renewable energy drew twenty-four submission points and a further six further submission points. We've got pretty bespoke themes to consider, which is largely around sustainable use of the land resource, protection of environmental values, and general points and plan clarity. No formal pre-hearing meetings were held, and there was no exchange of emails for points of clarification on renewable energy. There's been a few further pre-circulated evidence, and I'm ready to respond to any of those questions. My thinking hasn't further developed since the publishing of the forty-two A report.
Thank you. Could you, are you, this question I asked of Ms Lawson, are you able to sort of summarise where the outstanding matters in contention are in terms of renewable energy?
I don't, my thinking hasn't changed, apart from the minor amendments recommended by the panel.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Ms Mills. I, as I was reading through, I think it was RE zero-one, the sustainable use and development of renewable energy resources and the changes made there, another definition question, it struck me, we say, throughout the city, and it, as I was reading it, I was thinking, do we mean built form, or do we mean the city council boundaries? And again, I looked to the definition, not to find section, to find an answer, and I just wonder, is that a reader issue, or is that something that needs clarifying?
We could absolutely clarify it, but intent was the city boundaries.
City council boundaries, yeah.
But we could perhaps change it to district-wide or?
Yeah, if you could look into that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, no more questions. We'll turn to the topic of stormwater, but I understand, Ms Lincoln, you also want to address the question raised yesterday as well.
Yes, that's correct. Would you like me to do that first?
Scope issue. Okay, yes, please.
Okay, so there was a question raised from the panel around the fire and emergency in New Zealand.
That's right.
And the fact that they had made a number of submission points across the plan in relation to inserting a new standard to ensure there'd be adequate water supply for firefighting needs.
Mm-hmm.
The time yesterday, we indicated that we would be able to come together and present a response in our officer's reply. So, further to that, I guess I can provide a little bit more information around our thinking on this submission point. So, essentially, they're looking to insert a new standard across a number of old zones. What they've sought presents us with some complications in achieving the outcome that they're seeking. Without going into too much detail, they're asking for there to be a trigger for providing firefighting water supplies on any development. And the way that development is defined within the district plan essentially means any kind of resurfacing or any placement of buildings on land. And so we're looking at what the threshold would be and whether that's appropriate. We have also looked at whether there were other means to achieve it. And initially, we've recommended referencing the Napier City Council Engineering Code of Practice. There are mandatory requirements around it, firefighting water supply within that code of practice. However, that really only implies whether there's a subdivision or a development that triggers a resource consent. If there's a permitted development that occurs without needing to be any resource consent, there's no ability to, for us to require that. So, there is a gap. So, it's taking us a little bit of time to work through how we actually achieve the outcome sought and to, I guess, fill any gaps that we currently have within our existing system. So, which is why we're looking to come back to you with a more fulsome response within our officer's reply.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that one?
Great, thank you. So, I'll just move on to the matter of stormwater. So, my name is Flur Lincoln and I'm employed as the Principal Policy Planner within Napier City Council's City Development Team. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Resource and Environmental Planning with Honors. I have approximately twenty-two years of experience working as a planner in both private consultancy and local government. And I have been involved in the review of the proposed district plan since 2019. I'm an intermediate member of the NZPI and have completed the Making Good Decisions Programme. I was involved in the drafting of the stormwater chapter of the proposed district plan. And I've prepared the section forty-two A report for this chapter as well. And although this is a council hearing, I have read to the Code of Conduct for expert witnesses. And I've complied with the code when preparing my written evidence and I agree to comply with it in my oral evidence. And I'm happy to take any questions at the end of my statement. So, I'd just like to provide a bit of an overview of the stormwater chapter and what it seeks to achieve. The stormwater chapter seeks to manage stormwater in a way that responds to the capacity limitations of Napier's stormwater network. The majority of the reticulated network is over allocated by up to 200%. And council's programme of works to upgrade the network is extensive and will take several years. In the meantime, it is proposed that developments manage their stormwater on-site so that peak flows into the network are reduced. The stormwater chapter also seeks to manage the quality of stormwater entering the receiving environment through the imposition of water quality measures, including the installation of devices. The stormwater chapter works alongside other regulatory instruments, including the Engineering Code of Practice and the Stormwater Bylaw. Seventy-nine submission points and fifty-one further submissions were received in relation to this chapter. My report is divided into the key issues raised in submissions and includes, and I've listed there below, so submissions that are considered by separate topics, for example rezoning or natural hazards, the relationship with the bylaw, stormwater bylaw, exemptions to requirements, onsite attenuation or hydraulic mitigation, managing stormwater quantity, stormwater quality in the receiving environment, green infrastructure and low-impact design, overland flow paths, greenfield growth and intensification and a number of miscellaneous matters. Changes were sought by submitters across the chapter and I've made a number of recommendations to amend provisions of this chapter in my forty-two A report. And these include some clarification improvements, some changes to the threshold for stormwater quality improvement devices, changes in the approach taken for the calculation of detention and drain-down periods, and that's in standard one, and removing overland flow path mapping from the planning maps and referencing council's GIS viewer instead. There were no pre-hearing meetings with submitters held in relation to these submissions. However, I did have a brief phone call conversation with the representative of the fuel companies in relation to the outcome that's sought by rule one within the chapter and that relates to car parks. At the time of writing this summary, four submitters had provided pre-circulated submitter's evidence in advance of the hearing where matters raised in relation to the stormwater chapter remain in contention. Ravensdown seeks an amendment to the definition of swale. I agree in principle with the changes sought. Telecommunications companies seek an exemption within rule three for telecommunications lines, poles or buildings instructions with a footprint of less than 10 metres. So, an exemption there. The fuel companies have sought a number of changes to rule one and standard one and matters of discretion as they relate to hydraulic neutrality. And I agree in principle with the outcome sought. The regional council, so Hawke's Bay Regional Council maintains its position that clause A of rule one should be deleted. And with my recommendation to include the words where stormwater is discharged into the reticulated stormwater network into the rule in order to clarify that these rules are only relevant to activities where the discharge is to that network and not a direct discharge with its own consent. Then the statement in clause A is no longer needed and I therefore agree with the regional council that this clause could be deleted. While the arguments and suggested changes presented by some of the submitters have merit, I do wish to reserve any specific recommendations around wording for my officer's response report. The panel raised a number of questions in relation to this recommendation report and these have been addressed in a separate document, which I believe you have, was provided in advance of the hearing. So, there were a number of matters in contention in the stormwater chapter and they relate to the definition of swale, the exemption of telecommunications company activities from R three, overland flow paths rule, the threshold at which onsite stormwater treatment devices are required to be installed in car parks and a number of other minor amendments to that rule. Some minor amendments to standard one to improve clarity and provide greater flexibility in how that can be achieved and the deletion of clause A in rule one.
Okay, thank you. And just a broad question. In your overview, you kind of indicate that the developments manage their stormwater on-site to make sure peak flows into the network are reduced. You're implying that that's a temporary thing until the council have sorted out its programme. But I would hesitate to guess that that's not the case, that there'll be permanent requirements for?
I would imagine so, but certainly it's of urgent need to address the matter now. And that there is, you know, a programme of works to address capacity issues. But, yeah.
But the requirement for onsite mitigation will be an ongoing requirement now?
The programme is a long and extensive amount of work. So, it would certainly be in place for some time if not permanently.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Yep. Does the city council hold a comprehensive stormwater consent issued by the regional council for its network?
Yes, it does.
When was that granted roughly? How many years, how old is it?
It holds a number of resource consents, I believe, because we have a number of discharge points into the receiving environment. And I am aware that one has recently been reissued. But I don't have the details of it, sorry.
Right, because a number of other urban authorities previously held a number of discrete consents issued by the regional authority for their network and they've been consolidating them into one district or citywide comprehensive stormwater consent? Are you able just to inquire from whoever you need to ask within the council whether that's the intention here or whether they want to keep a whole lot of discrete and possibly and possibly consents that aren't necessarily uniform in the nature of the conditions regarding quality, et cetera?
Sure, sure. I do note that Andrew Gass has zoomed in and he is responsible for our environmental environmental solutions team. So, yeah, I can, I can ask him after this hearing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy for you just to cover it off in your reply, it's just a matter of curiosity. But there is an interaction between district plan provisions and the conditions imposed on comprehensive stormwater consents that urban authorities hold, so you just need to understand how that works. You talk about the reticulated network that could entail pipes and/or open channels for the conveyance of stormwater. I don't think the district plan has a definition of stormwater reticulated network. So, what's your understanding of the phrase reticulated network?
Yes, so my, my understanding is, yeah, pipes into, you know, connections into pipes in the ground and then, and also into, I know that stormwater is also managed through connections into like curbs, you can say that in the street, as well as into open drains. The, my understanding is that that all of those methods encompass what is a reticulated network and that, that I guess, the discharge of stormwater that's not within reticulated is through the regional council rules and that may require regional council consent.
Exactly. Again, I think it'd be good to have clarity on that because a lot of urban authorities only consider the reticulated network to comprise pipes, whereas open channels come under a different regime managed by the regional council. So, if you could just again inquire about what Napier City thinks its reticulated stormwater network covers. And then I think if you could come up with a definition that could be included in the plan just to provide certainty to everyone, just so again that jurisdictional overlap is clear right from the outset.
Yes, absolutely, I can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms Lincoln. Very helpful. Who do we have next? Lucky Lass. Sajin?
Kiora Koito, Lucky Lass, lucky seat. Today I'll be just sharing the opening statement on the open space zones. My name is Jerial Sajin and I'm employed by the council as a policy analyst. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Business Studies and a Master of Public Policy. I was not involved in drafting the open space zones or the boat harbour zone, but I was, I did prepare the section forty-two report for this, for these chapters. My section forty-two A report consolidates submissions across three chapters, the open space zone, natural open space zone and sport and active recreation zone within a single section forty-two A report. The submissions received were as follows. The natural open space zone received fourteen submissions of fifty submission points and nine further submission points. And the open space zone received fourteen submissions, forty-seven submission points, eight further submissions. And the sport and active rec zone received thirteen submissions, forty submission points and nine further submissions. The key issues raised in the submissions. The key matters raised in submissions across all three open space chapters include the recreational and community use of those zones. This included requests to enable activities relevant to the zone, including recreational, stormwater and appropriate commercial activities, consistency and clarity, ensuring provisions align across the district plan to improve usability, infrastructure and emergency services, requests from FiNS and NZTA to provide emergency service facilities and infrastructure-related activities. Rules and standard adjustments included refinements to provisions to better align with the zone's objectives. Site-specific matters, these were requests relating to specific locations and their unique considerations, and natural open space environment values. So, that's ensuring protection and management of natural environments within the natural open space zone. Several submissions sought the same or similar relief across all three open space chapters. There were a number of changes I recommended in response, I mostly agreed and accepted. I am happy to take any questions regarding any of those changes. One pre-meeting, pre-hearing meeting was held with Ms Amelia Longley on behalf of the NCC Open Spaces team, where most matters were resolved as shown in the section forty-two report. No other pre-hearing meetings with submitters were held. Following a review of the pre-circulated evidence that came before the release of the statement, the remaining areas of contention were the inclusion of a new rule for emergency service facilities in the open space zones where FiNS was seeking a restricted discretionary activity status in a new rule. This is separate to the matter that Flur has just discussed about a standard. This is the request for a rule in the zone. And then also the consideration of infrastructure provisions, which have already been addressed in other sections of the plan. So, my responses as below. FiNS has sought provisions to allow emergency, excuse me, emergency service facilities as a restricted discretionary activity in the open space zones. I do not consider this approach appropriate. Open space zones in Napier are primarily governed by the Reserves Act nineteen seventy-seven and as many of them are vested as reserves with council with a gazetted purpose. This restricts development to facilities that enhance things like public enjoyment of the reserve. Recreation reserves may only accommodate structures and amenities that are necessary for public use and enjoyment. Under the Act, any part of the recreation reserve may be developed for things like gardens, open spaces, footpaths, driveways or picnic grounds, or for the provision of any other facilities like, any other like facilities for public recreation or enjoyment for facilities or amenities necessary for the public using the reserve. Given the statutory framework providing for emergency facilities as restricted discretionary activity wouldn't be consistent with the purpose of these reserves and could introduce activities that do not align with the recreational and community focus of the open space zones. In response to Kiwi Rail and NZTA submissions, Kiwi Rail and NZTA raised concerns regarding the restrictive, non-complying activity status for infrastructure in the open space zones. In response to these submissions, I acknowledge that all three zones do have the catch-all, non-complying activity rules which could unintentionally restrict necessary infrastructure activities. So, to ensure consistency with the other planned chapters, I support amending the introduction of the, of all three open space zones to clarify the network utilities are managed under the network utilities chapter. This approach aligns with the recommendations that were made in the Natural Features and Landscapes chapter. And I consider that it provides a clearer, more consistent regulatory framework for this type of infrastructure. This was a relief sought by both Kiwi Rail and NZTA. And the matters raised by the panel have been answered in the separate document provided in advance. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms Sajin? Long question here.
Thank you, Ms Sajin. Just in regards to temporary activities, I think I've it on page twenty of your report. There is a change to the matter of discretion proposed by a submitter, removing quality living environments with quality amenity for adjacent residents. Are you able to talk me through the rationale for that?
Yeah, that was just to ensure consistency that the matter was about Yeah, that was just to ensure consistency that the matter was about the surrounding environment because the open spaces itself is not the living environment. So that's why that wording was changed, to reflect that more accurately.
Have you considered that this introduces third parties to the assessment where it wasn't previously?
Yeah, I, I did take that into consideration in my assessment. I, at that time, I, I considered that it was already part of it, but it just wasn't clear enough that the living environment already considered others in the surrounding living environment, but just wasn't clear in that way. And I considered that this would make it clearer. If you consider that there's effects that might bring that I haven't thought about, I'd be keen to hear them.
Thank you. I think it does.
Okay, thank you. No questions. So thank you very much. Now, we do have Ms Beech and online at the moment to respond to matters arising from yesterday, I believe. Good morning.
Morning everyone.
Morning.
So just to reintroduce myself for those who were not present yesterday. My name is Pitt Beech and I prepared the section 42 A report for the airport zone to address the issue of scope which was raised. I can confirm that the assessment of scope included within the evidence received from Hawke's Bay Airport Limited is correct. And there is indeed a scope issue regarding the broader view shafts recommended in the section 42 A report. Based on expert advice, we extended the breadth of these view shafts. However, we are limited to changes that have the same or lesser impact than what was originally notified. Within this constraint, minor modifications to existing view shafts remain within scope. For example, relocating the origin points to less compromised locations.
Thank you very much for that. Just a quick question from me. So upon that agreement, your response or in your reply to matters raised by the airport will be contained within those constraints that you've just identified. So any changes to the rules and provisions will be sort of looking at working within the notified version or something less, less than that? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and you, have you had a chance to talk to any of the experts for the airport on, within those constraints? I know you've, on the new report, that you've indicated that that, that would be necessary, but you haven't had a chance.
Not yet. I haven't had a chance. Yeah, not yet.
Okay. Any questions from the panel on, on this point?
No, it's pretty clear.
No, it's pretty clear, yeah. Well, thank you, Ms Beech and for, for clarifying that point. That will be helpful moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's any more further questions for the reporting officers, so we will move forward. Maria Roberts, you're more than welcome to join us at the submission table. Thank you very much. And we do have a hard copy and a soft copy of your presentation, but basically the floor is all yours. We're here to listen to your points.
Excuse me, ma'am, you, accessibility, is this?
Yeah. Oh, okay. So how do I put, oh, yeah, I can just, oh, is that going to show up, are you?
Morning everyone. I'm Maria Roberts. I'm here as a community member, representing some disabled community members in Napier. I'm part of Accessible Napier, which is an informal loose network, online group of disabled people. Dr Athena Hollis English was going to present with me. She's a social worker at Fairhaven School and she has a disabled daughter. So I've got some slides from her, but she's also happy to be contacted regarding the submission.
Thank you.
I'm originally a registered nurse. I worked for 30 years as a community support worker, including for IDA Services IHC in New Zealand, Australia, and the United Kingdom. I currently work in learning support for EIT. My work for IDA Services IHC included driving a van and caring for people in wheelchairs. As a daughter, I helped care for my elderly parents. My father had a mobility scooter. He lived in Taradale. My mother lived for a few years at the end of her life at Uttafai, and I used to take her out every day in her wheelchair for a walk, so used to negotiating streets in a wheelchair. So basically, I support embedding some of the Napier City Council Disability Strategy into the district plan just with a few words. So this picture here, the population statistics, the more we know about our Napier population, the better we can meet their needs. This is Athena's daughter Ramari. She's 11 years old. The reason Athena's not here today is that Ramari's being flown down from Hawke's Bay Hospital to Wellington Hospital for a scoliosis operation. Ramari has a rare disorder. Athena told me that Ramari is 35 kilograms, but with her wheelchair as well, 74 kilograms, which is pretty heavy to negotiate around footpaths, in and out of vans, et cetera. And that's what she's doing on a daily basis, as well as looking after Ramari's other needs and her two other children. So wanting to embed some points from the Napier City Council Disability Strategy into the district plan. These points are then there for the Napier City Council Disability Teams, two of whom are present here today, to use in the future, as well as council staff working in transport. So I've given copies of the disability strategy to you. And on page three is the information about the disabled population in Napier. So my proposal is in the district plan point 219.1, and the description of the district and description of the population, including that in Napier, 27% of people have a disability. 53% are over 55, 36% are over 65 years old. And at the bottom of that page, Napier has an aging population with 1 in 4 people expected to be over 65 years old by 2031. The next page in the disability strategy, page five, what our disability community said is important. Access, information, inclusion, positive perceptions, we can and we love Napier. So generally, in policy documents, if you can include the words access, accessibility, and inclusion as much as you can, that includes, that includes disabled people. Page six of the disability strategy values. We value people with disabilities. Our community is caring and inclusive. Our places and spaces are accessible. And the focus areas that I'm looking at here are getting around and being safe. The key goals: everyone can go where they want to go, everyone is safe. And the council aims: we have enough mobility parks in the right places. Our footpaths, walkways are smooth, wide, and unobstructed. Our crossings are safe for all. Council buildings are accessible for staff and customers. There is access to parks and reserves. And also on page nine of this, it repeats those points. So my proposal is TPT 12 to add disabled users of micro mobility. So micro mobility refers to mobility scooters and wheelchairs. Here's a picture of Athena's van with Ramari coming in and out. Athena wanted to point out that although some disabled, this is quite, some disabled parks are better than others. The ones that have space for a van and also the back area are the best because then she can get her daughter, you know, fold out the hoist and get her daughter out. But there are some situations where it's dangerous and where disabled people and their caregivers are less protected than road workers. Where road workers would have cones to protect them. Disabled people and their caregivers have nothing. And Athena said she uses a smiley face and waves it at other people in cars, but really that's not enough as protection. And this is a picture of Athena on a normal day getting her daughter out of the van. So my other point was point 219.3 to add accessible. The word accessible and so currently it says the integrated transport network provides safe and attractive routes. So just to put the word accessible, safe, accessible, and attractive routes. Page nine of our disability strategy sees that our places and spaces are accessible. The next point, point 219.4, quality design. I propose adding the word accessible. Quality, high amenity, accessible and healthy environments to live, work, and play. So it also suggests using the word accessible wherever you've got the word safe. Just pop accessible in as well, and that covers disabled people because it's part of safety for them. And that's in the disability strategy, page six. Point 219.5 includes, I suggest including universal design in the design guidelines. Currently, the quality design refers to art deco buildings, but universal design comes under quality design with, with regards to accessibility. Disability strategy, page six and nine, council buildings are accessible for staff and customers. And councillor Greg Morrison, who's actually on leave today, has said that the new Teaka Council Library Building is being built to universal design. So that's perfect. So just suggesting that universal design is included in the district plan as part of quality design so that hopefully going forward other council buildings are as well. There's currently a problem with the WINS building that's not built to those standards.
Which building?
WINS, but that's not council, but it's an interesting thing that I suppose council had to give permission for WINS to build there. Yes, the the, the ramp is very steep, so imagine pushing 74 kilograms up a steep ramp. Yeah, it's impossible, so. So that's my submission. I'm really hoping that accessibility and inclusion can be included for our roughly 20% population in Napier.
Thank you. And there's some further addition, there's another slide to this slide. Do you want to talk to?
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you for pointing that out.
See if you can get it moving.
Yeah. There we go.
Yeah.
So Athena's put this, bumpy, yeah, so this is a really important point about footpaths. Bumpy footpaths can be dangerous for people with weak neck strength and underdeveloped neck muscles. Wheelchairs and mobility scooters can topple easily, and they do. The weight of the wheelchair is super heavy and the person pulling, pushing it can struggle on slopes. Footpaths that are shaped like that, they're on a, you're on a slope. So that was the point there. So I'm looking also at page nine in the disability strategy. It includes a point, review the condition and design of new and existing walkways. So I'd like that considered as part of accessibility.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from the panel?
Yeah, thank you. No questions for you, but two issues for the officers. The district plan review diagram that's discussed under point 219.4, is that part of the district plan itself or is that part of a promotional or explanatory document? Do you know?
Sorry, can you repeat what diagram it was? 219, is it not on the?
Well, have you got the submission in front of you that's being presented? So the submitter raised point 219.4 is seeking to add the word accessible to the district plan review diagram I've seen foundations for Napier. And my question is, is that part of the district plan itself or is that part of a promotional document relating to the district plan?
That was part of the document that I was given to filling out, yeah.
It's part of the document. I'm really sorry for being a bit daft here. The point that I'm looking at, we accepted, but only insofar as it relates to objective three, no diagram.
All right, well, can you just?
Can I confirm?
Well, no, you, I'm asking you to confirm. So can you go away and look at the submission?
Yeah.
Point 219.4 and clarify for us if the district plan review diagram is part of the district plan or, or not.
Cool, okay.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. And the second question for the officers is that we're being asked to include a universal design guideline that would need to be incorporated by reference into the plan. There's pretty strict requirements in the RMA about incorporating documents by reference which have to occur before that is included in the plan. So can you address that particular point in reply? But my initial view is that there'd be sort of scope and procedural issues that might preclude us doing that. But if you could address that point in reply, please. Okay, and that's the point 219.5 in the original written submission. And no questions of clarification for you?
Okay, thank you.
There's other members of the panel though.
Oh, Annie Graham.
No, I don't have a question. I'd just like to commend you and particularly that last point. I've experienced trying to push a wheelchair down Latham Street and it all wanted to do was go into the gutter.
Yes.
I don't understand exactly what you.
Thank you, Graham. I appreciate that you've had personal experience at this. Yeah, it means a lot. Yeah. Okay.
No further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. Okay, we will now take a break, our morning tea, and resume at 10.50 when we will hear from Hawke's Bay Airport Limited. So thank you very much. The hearing is adjourned. Until then.
Good morning T. And our submitters for the next part of the hearing are Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, welcome. And I understand legal counsel is Bea McEwan, yes, Mr Bullen?
Morning sir.
So we have read all of the submissions and the evidence pre-circulated, so thank you for that. And we have had a copy of Mr Bray's presentation for today as well, so he'll lead us through that, no doubt. And I don't know if you've managed to hear some relevant points that were raised yesterday in the hearings. We did have some live streaming issues unfortunately, but I don't think there should be anything too surprising in that. Commissioner Brosnan will recuse herself from hearing or asking anything to do with the Aheiri Estree Stormwater zoning matter because of her role on the Regional Park Committee. Other than that, we're all good to go. So, Mr Bullen, would you like to kick off for us?
Yes, thanks sir. We have listened to some of the live streams so far. So I'll introduce the airport's team at the hearing today. So I'm Liam Bullen, councillor for Hawke's Bay Airport. In the room, in order of which they will present evidence, is Mr Nick Black, who is CEO of Hawke's Bay Airport. He will provide a brief written summary statement. Also in the room is Mr Gavin Carey Smith for the airport, presenting evidence. Mr Damian Corbett will present evidence on bird strike. Mr Shannon Bray, who will present evidence on landscape. And Ms Ellen Robertum, who will provide planning evidence. The airport's appearance today will largely focus on responding to matters raised since legal submissions and evidence were filed, including view shafts and bird strike, as well as responding to any questions that the panel may have. I do not propose to read my legal submissions in full unless the panel would like me to do so. I will just respond to certain matters raised since my legal submissions were filed, but also respect the key points.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of the key points from my legal submissions, I will start at paragraph 5.1.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thanks sir. As outlined in that evidence of Ms Robertum, modern airports have moved beyond just runways and terminals. These now include, they now include a wide range of activities to provide for the needs of passengers, crew, ground staff and airport workers. Modern airports also incorporate a range of industrial and logistical activities that directly service the airport and utilise the airport for its own activities. This is further demonstrated by the references to case law in paragraphs 5.2 and 5.3 of my legal submissions. Both the airport zone and airport purpose designation need to provide for and enable the activities which are part of a modern airport. I will now move to section seven of my evidence of my legal submissions. Paragraph 7.1, consultation documents for the future development strategy. Estimate demand for approximately 47 hectares of new industrial land in Napier over the next thirty years. The airport zone in the proposed plan has the greatest potential to provide this industrial land as it contains 42 hectares of the 62 hectares currently available industrial land. Land within the airport zone must be available for industrial purposes in order for Napier to satisfy estimated demand for industrial land. The airport zone chapter therefore needs to give effect to the NPSUD. Paragraph 7.3, paragraph 7.5 of my legal submissions discuss how the airport zone can give effect to the NPSUD. I will now move to the issue of view shafts, which are covered in section nine of my legal submissions. My legal submissions raise a scope issue with the proposed view shafts, which I will not read out. I listened to the chair yesterday ask about the scope for widening the view shafts and I note the council has sought legal advice on this point. The chair also referred to the officer for the airport zone chapter meeting with Hawke's Bay Airport after the hearing to discuss view shafts, as indicated in the officer's opening statement. They also note the officer was open to changes being made through the notified view shafts to improve their effectiveness if there is a scope issue with the view shafts, as recommended in the section 42 of our report.
Mr Bullen, did you hear the officer this morning agree that it was a scope issue? And that thus that any changes to the airport zone and other related provisions would have to be confined to those as notified, the view shafts as notified or something less than that?
I did not hear that sir, but I just thought put them on, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would agree with that as well. Mr Bray will address the hearings panel in relation to an indicative amended view shaft that he and Hawke's Bay Airport are likely to be comfortable with. Ms Robertum will cover recommended amendments through the supporting provisions for the view shafts as well. And Hawke's Bay Airport is willing to meet with the officer after the hearing and details of the view shaft and supporting provisions can be discussed and further refined then.
Thank you.
I will move to bird strike at section 10 of my legal submissions. Mr Corbett's evidence describes the risks associated with bird strike. One of the reasons that bird strike provisions need to be included in the district plan is that Hawke's Bay Airport can largely only control activities on its own land that cannot control what others do and has to rely on non-regulatory methods such as engagement and cooperation. Bird strike is also an argument issue in my submission. Reading from paragraph 10.3, health and safety is also part of the definition of sustainable management in section five of the RMA. I won't read the definition. If the proposed plan allows high-risk activities to establish within the flight path of the airport, then the proposed plan will not be enabling the airport to provide for health and safety. Ms Robertum will provide an update on her discussions with the network utilities chapter officer on a plan-wide approach to bird strike. I can now take questions from the panel or move on to Hawke's Bay Airport's witnesses.
Any questions for Mr Bullen?
Just one, so just for clarification, is the airport no longer seeking the total deletion of the view shaft provisions?
Mr Bray will present a view shaft that the airport is comfortable with. And I understand that to be the airport's position. So yes, we're no longer seeking deletion.
Okay, thank you. No questions for me, no more questions. So we will move on. Mr Black?
Kurokoto, thanks for your time this morning. And before the airport's other witnesses say their piece, I'd just like to introduce myself. Say that I've been chief executive at the airport for a total of a month since the evidence was presented. And but prior to the month that I've spent at Hawke's Bay Airport, I've spent 12 years at Kraschich Airport and have participated in multiple plan changes as well as the Waimea Kereari District Plan Review, Sowin District Plan Review and Kraschich District Plan Review, all of which have both strike provisions, out-of-control noise boundaries with land use restrictions and development of industrial property at a modern airport. And I've witnessed first-hand how good planning provisions can support regional infrastructure and unlock regional connectivity and prosperity. And thankful to be here to participate and support the Hawke's Bay Airport, its evidence and its advisors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks. So just introduce myself and then a brief summary. Just letting you know that the summary that I've got here is basically that of what I've stated in the evidence.
Right.
All right, so Gavin Carey Smith is my name and I'm the senior asset infrastructure manager at the airport. I've been on the hearing panel for stream one, streams one and two. So with regard to the stream three, I consider it important to highlight that Hawke's Bay Airport provides significant economic and social benefits to Napier and the wider Hawke's Bay region, making it an important strategic asset. HBL, or the airport, our airport, recognises that we play a unique role in the gateway experience of our visitors and passengers and we provide the first and last impressions of Napier to a lot of them. And over the last decade, HBL has invested over 20 million in airport upgrades which reflect and celebrate our region's unique character and context. Modern airports in New Zealand and around the world provide for a range of airport-related industrial activities. And some activities are located near airports because they depend on air services, while others locate there because of business operations or location preference. HBL has undertaken extensive master planning exercises to ensure future travel demand and associated safety requirements are met and to inform development of our airport business precedent. In my view, it is appropriate for the district plan to enable HBL to be flexible in responding to changes in demand and security requirements at the airport. It is also appropriate for the district plan to provide for the development of commercial and industrial land in the vicinity of the airport where the effects of this development can be managed well. Most of all, it is important to HBL that the proposed plan provisions enable and protect HBL to fulfil its obligations as a significant infrastructure provider now and into the future. And in particular, which Damian will be sharing, the management of wildlife hazards which pose a significant safety risk to our operation. Just to close, so we, the airport recognises a significant role, remember, as a primary gateway to Napier and Hawke's Bay and we are dedicated to responsibly managing the land and the assets in our care. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Could you be of assistance? It is in your evidence that you've got a copy of not only the rezone, repair, extension plans, but also the master plan for it. And the reference in the figure is that the plan for the airport business precinct. Could you just clarify, lead us through that plan if you can? I don't know if it's possible to get it on screen or not, but.
Yeah, we'll have to bring it up on screen, excuse me.
Because some of the submissions and evidence that were revolved around that plan, in particular where and what the airport business precinct is?
Yes, Sean, we'll bring that up and we can have a look.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Sorry, Dan. Yep, there's the next figure on in particular.
Yeah, maybe if you wrote, are you able to rotate it? That's the correct map. And perhaps zoom in a little bit so we can.
So there were two, this is the air biz, our main airdrome master plan.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Which captures all of our site. There is one other more in-depth master plan, which we've seen pictures of, which shows really a more detail of how the layout of the buildings would form in the business park and what we call the freight park. So if you're looking at this plan, so to the south west, the southeast, on either side of the road where you're driving in is where we call the airport business precinct or the business park. So that's, if you guys would know too, when you're driving through, so that's on the left and the right as you come in. And majority of that is just grass at the moment. And then as you come further in, you see ABB as being the first commercial building or factory there. So then on the north-east side, where we don't have any roadway to yet, that is, would be in the future at some point, more than likely a longer time away. That would be where our freight logistics type park would be more suited possibly to air, air transport. But could also help with the community or with the region in terms of transport for other reasons. But that's yet to be developed. So that's, in terms of our master plan, it just gives a future, 2045 is what we're looking at, sort of plan. So it's, we need to be prepared for those as we, as we go. And as you know, the business park has been there for some time, is ready to go for us. for us as part of our development.
But just to clarify, the airport business precinct is that area as you're coming into the airport on either side, not to the north of the terminal?
No, that's.
From a planning perspective and the proposed district plan, the airport business precinct is the whole area shown as blue in that white dotted area. And so from the airport's master planning perspective, the business park is the area to the south and the freight hub is the area to the north, but the proposed rules cover both those activities.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Any, any questions on the? Thank you for that. You're welcome.
My name is Damien Corbett, I'm the airside and facilities manager at Hawke's Bay Airport. One of my key responsibilities in this role is ensuring airside safety and security, including wildlife management to mitigate risks associated with bird strikes. My evidence in chief relates to the management of bird strike at Hawke's Bay Airport. It includes information regarding the key risks that bird strikes present to Hawke's Bay Airport and its users, Hawke's Bay Airport's current approach to managing bird strike risk and why bird strike should be recognized and provided for in the proposed plan. I don't mean to repeat my evidence, but I wish to highlight a few important matters to the panel. Wildlife management is an important operational safety risk for Hawke's Bay Airport. Currently, the airport has one of the highest rates of bird strike in New Zealand. Collisions between aircraft and wildlife can result in damage too, or at worst, the loss of the aircraft and its occupants. The airport has obligations under the civil aviation regulations to minimize and eliminate wildlife hazards. As part of this, the airport is required to have and maintain a wildlife hazard management plan, monitor the presence of wildlife hazards, disperse wildlife that pose a risk to aircraft, mitigate the risk of bird strike occurring by all practical methods, report all wildlife incidents to the civil aviation authority and remove wildlife attractants where practicable. Wildlife been working with nearby landowners such as the Palmo Farm to undertake cows and other activities to reduce the impact of bird attracting activities around the airport. These methods do rely on the cooperation of landowners. There is consequently limited ability for Hawke's Bay Airport to manage bird behavior off-site and minimize wildlife hazards. The district plan review provides a chance for the district plan to include provisions that control land use activities that have the potential to elevate bird strike in Napier.
Thank you. Just a question from me to start. Yesterday, we were inquiring about whether the Huriri estuary zone, freshwater zone, how that could be done in a way that wouldn't raise risks of airstrike. And we were told that planted areas of wetland, if you like, fully planted ones would, I don't know, avoid was probably too strong a word, minimize that risk. I don't know if you heard that, but is that something you're comfortable with in terms of the design?
Yeah, so different plantings change the species of birds. Yeah, you're bigger gulls and swans and geese, you know, much bigger bird is a much bigger risk. So if we change the plantings to modify the habitat there, we can manage the species to ones that either fly at lower levels or heavy sitting on those areas.
Okay. And so the airport would also be interested in any, any wetland restoration going on to the north of the airport, for instance, as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd just add to that too, though, plantings of the wet areas absolutely is a way to manage that, but also it's during the construction and of that, which takes time, the wildlife management plans, which we are in discussion and working through are critical. And how that gets managed when it's, when it's not our property is critical for part of that planning.
Okay. So any wildlife management plan would have some sort of input from the airport or role for the airport in that implementation?
Absolutely.
And just to add to that, that is exactly what happens in Kraschich under the district plan provisions, is there is a requirement for the airport to review wildlife management plans through construction and operation of facilities.
Right. Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Mr. Bray? You do have a presentation?
I do have some slides, which I think you alluded to earlier, which is on that computer, I believe. I think we just need to flick it over. So Kurokoto and Bray, I think you all know me, landscape architect in Hawke's Bay. Yeah, so I've provided you evidence, I'm not going to cover all of that. I really just want to respond to one point in the reporting office's opening statement. Was that paragraph nineteen, she said, "The extent of landscape sensitive areas were informed by technical evidence." So my understanding is that actually there's no expert technical evidence being presented regarding the airport zone. However, there were two reports that probably informed the thinking. Those two reports would be the ISMS study, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and the Terraform report, which is written by Deborah Stewart, who was at council for a while and is now consultant. Both those reports were draft and the latter, the Terraform report, was actually uncompleted, to my understanding. It contains some brief statements and a hand drawn sketch of some potential recommendations, but I consider that that report has significant deficiencies in its approach, its methodology and its reasoning. And because of those, I chose not to respond to that report in my evidence, but rather return to basics and, and look at this problem sort of, I guess, holistically, work through it in a more logical manner, you know, how could view shafts provide visual connect to identified landscape features? And our work is identified, is very much based on the ISMS study. I think everybody is pretty comfortable that that's a very good piece of work, it's been nationally recognized. And my opinion is the district plan should really respond to the recommendation contained in that report more than anything else. In that regard, the map that I've produced on the screen there is an overview of the key recommendations from the ISMS report regarding to sort of this area, this landscape, Fongonui Orutu. There were six key areas that were identified. And I've identified five of them because one of them is about identifying key opportunities over all the entire landscape. But the other are specific areas that were identified as requiring sort of more in-depth, what do they call it? Identified as priority parts of the landscape. So area A to the north, which are the former islands that sit up to the top there, B, which is right down to the southwestern corner, which is around Park Island, C is the outlook to the western hills from the airport, D is restoring a natural ecotone between the undeveloped section of the, where the beacons are, I don't know if you've seen those, they're the old sort of structures that sit there, there's quite a lot of wetland area and, and the coast there. And then the ecological conditions around the estuary. What's notable in that, there's, there's no mention in the ISMS report whatsoever about the West Shore Wildlife Reserve or the Watchman Road Reserve. They were actually restored by the airport with NZTA and the council through that, that work. Prior to that, they were pretty degraded. So our original work identified what we considered were logical, manageable, very defendable view shafts to the various features contained in the map. Our focus was from State Highway Corridor. I understand that there's some questions regarding the scope in those, or you've sort of touched on that, but what I wanted to reiterate is our work, there's, there's no opportunity for meaningful connective, connected view shafts to landscape features from within the landscape part of the airport, the landside part of the airport. It's, it's developed, it's built up, the, the views are at best minimal glimpses, and we've provided that in our evidence. And the landscape features that you're trying to get to, there's so much foreground activity going on, you, you don't, you just don't have that appreciation, that connection to that. What I have suggested is, and I've talked to the airport about, is supporting a view shaft from airside. If we flick to the next slide, I've set out in my evidence how I consider that, that view is important. That's that sort of sense arrival that you get when you get off the plane, but it's also the view from the cafe, from the observation area. What you are essentially, although you're in the terminal, you are essentially airside and you're capturing that view. And I think that's the consistent view shaft with the ISMS report. And I get to the conclusion that the landscape sensitive areas, landside, don't achieve the outcomes that were sought either in this, in the ISMS report. They are already significantly compromised, they cover car parks and they cover buildings that are already there. In my opinion, the best way to manage the amenity around the airport landscape is through buffering and planting. I note this was actually a key recommendation of the Terraform report and was the outcome described by the reporting planner in the panel's questioning interview yesterday. A more specific landscape strip requirement provides a very clear, understandable, defendable desired outcome rather than it leaving to interpretation through resource consent. And I noticed the policy restrict the discretion, it says, "Management of landscape and visual effects or visual amenity and landscape effects is the discretion." As a landscape architect, I could very easily justify a terminal, sorry, a hangar type building being constructed on any of that grassland next to the reserve. It's, it's part of the character of the airport, it would be a very simple justification to say that the landscape effects are managed because of that basis. So if a specific outcome is, is required, which is buffering of the reserve, then that's what the policy should provide for in the plan. So I'll leave that. For your questions?
Any questions, Mr. Bray? Yeah, so really just to be clear, are you now, your expert evidence to us is to impose a view shaft that's shown on the screen at the moment? Because your evidence in chief recommended the deletion of the view shafts, which I thought presented quite a cogent and comprehensive argument in favor of that relief, so you've changed your mind?
No, my evidence says that there are no view shafts landside. And so what I'm saying is that is an airside view shaft. And so what I suggested in the, that the sensitive landscape control area doesn't provide that view shaft because it's compromised by whatever happens right on the boundary. Whereas a view shaft that, that extended right across both zones is, is much more manageable and provides a defined view shaft that is airside. But, but there's nothing landside that, that would provide such a view.
Yep, I understand that. And so again, just to repeat the question, so is what's on screen now is what you're now recommending be imposed?
What we're suggesting is that better achieves the outcomes that the ISMS, that I believe that the ISMS report was trying to provide for.
Yeah. That's not quite the question I was asking. What I want to know from you is that, is that what you are now recommending in your expert opinion to us as a hearing panel?
Yes, let's say yes.
Okay. And just regarding the LSCAs, so with LCA one, if we could just have it shown on screen at the moment, are you recommending the deletion of that or just it's narrowing down to a three meter buffer?
Yeah, deletion. I, I don't think that the, the method by which a landscape control area is managed is going to achieve the outcomes that are sought. Notice that adjacent to that reserve, a three meter wide buffer strip, landscape buffer strip is planted, that's a very simple provision that Mr. Robert can cover. That provides a very clear defined outcome of what is trying to be achieved and how to manage that, that transition.
Yeah, I read that in your evidence, I had no issue with that, I just wanted to clarify if you were just seeking to narrow down or to get rid of it and have a buffer instead, some other provision?
No, I, my, my view is that, that landscape control area doesn't achieve what is sought.
And again, just to clarify my understanding, your evidence is that you're recommending that the landscape sensitive control area to be deleted or omitted from the plan?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, and I certainly understood the rationale for that in your evidence, and just like to compliment you on your evidence, which I found to be very comprehensive and helpful, so thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any further questions?
No, I think that was teased out well, thank you.
Some of the questions have already been answered. The, the discussion around the future business park development includes the northern area of the airport, which currently is open and undeveloped. Can I just understand your rationale for not having some sort of more in-depth landscape controls for that end, which is yet to be developed and is some distance from the main core part of the terminal?
There's no natural landscape in that area, there's no wetland, it's all highly modified right up to the road corridor. It's beyond that, you can just see it in the hatched area further to the north is where the, you know, those wetland areas start. For all intents and purposes, that's a patch of mowed grass. I, I don't see it as having any particular landscape value.
What about view shafts?
Yeah, so in terms of the view shafts, when we were looking at the original view shafts, you know, what was it, 18 months ago, I think, when we did our submission? We, we actually walked most of that length of that corridor and also sort of along, next to rubber line and, and along the beach path. And it's not until you clear those houses, you can just see on the, the right there, when you start to clear those houses, that's when the view right across that landscape, past the beacons and to the islands to the north, really start to open up. And that's why we suggested a sequential view shaft along the road from there, which, which is beyond the built environment of the airport. It's, it's clear of that and it's also beyond the built environment of the houses to the right. What you're, what you're then getting is, is that broad connection between the coast and, and to Fongonui Oruta to the left. Yeah. And in reverse, when you're coming south, it's the same deal, you, you get the view right across to the watchman and then across to the park island, beyond the airport, but as you start approaching the airport boundary, what, what actually starts to grab your attention is the runway. And you can see the planes, you can watch planes landing, you can also see quite often into the air ambulance hangar. And, and so that's, that's what's grabbing your attention already. Any more built development will be the same. So, so you've lost that connection to the bigger landscape already, it's already compromised.
Okay, so given, given it's completely undeveloped at the moment and sort of adjacent to the more openness of the area, do you see, and you talked about planting and buffering as part of a response to other parts, do you see any need or requirement for that part, given that it's a blank slate at the moment, literally?
I don't see a need for it. It would be nice to have, but, but I, I think there is a greater need for the, you know, I understand that idea of buffering around the reserve, I mean, I think the reserve has already got some buffering in it and it's, in the way it's been developed, but, but a, but a building setback and planting around the reserve has a lot more sense in terms of that little landscape amenity, that ecological, ecological amenity. And that part of the road journey along State Highway two, you've already got built environment right there. So yeah, you could put some planting, that would be a nice to have, but I don't think it's, it's a necessary outcome. It's already compromised.
Going back to your evidence where you sort of draw your, your evaluation up in terms of the benefits versus the costs and the risks, and you put a, put a bit of weight on the fact that the benefits of the airport and its future development outweigh the, the protection of the landscape values in that area?
Yeah, I do, I mean, that. Yeah, I do. I mean, that that is a a prime development area of the airport. If we if we start restricting, we start restricting that area because, you know, we want to have some lovely landscape outcomes. Don't get me wrong, definitely for nice planning and and setbacks and all of that, but if we start imposing it too much, then the risk is the airport has to grow outside of its boundaries that at the moment. And and for me, that's a much bigger cost in terms of landscape outcomes. Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Bray? No, thank you very much, Mr. Bray. Thanks.
Cool. My name's Ellen Robetham. I'm a senior planner at Mitchell Day Limited. I have circulated a paper copy of my summary statement for you this morning. I understand you have been given a copy of that, so I will read through it, but I'll sort of give a slightly abridged version. So to start with, I have appeared before the hearings panel with respect to hearings streams one and two. And I outlined my relevant qualifications and experience in my evidence for hearing one, so I haven't repeated that here. My evidence in chief covers a range of chapters of the Napier City proposed plan. And the wide range of those are listed there at paragraph 1.3. In summary, I generally support the recommendations of the section forty-two A report with regard to the network utilities chapter, stormwater chapter and transport chapter. And with regard to the management of height constraints and runway end protection areas in the open spaces zones. However, I do not support the recommendations in the section forty-two A report for the following matters. The airport zone chapter issues and objectives. I remain of the view that the framework of the airport zone chapter requires amendment to ensure operational and functional requirements of the airport are afforded sufficient recognition and that a principal approach is adopted to inform the subsequent policies, rules and standards and assessment criteria. Landscape and amenity effects in the airport zone. A more holistic approach is required to ensure that the values of Te Fanga Nui'a Uro Tu' area are appropriately recognized and promoted in the airport context. I'll provide some further detail on this later on. Enabling and managing activities with the airport zone. A range of activities are suitable to locate within the airport zone. However, the current rule framework, in my opinion, is unduly restrictive. Management of bird strike risk. Based on the high risk that airport safety and efficiency posed by bird strike, I recommend new bird strike management provisions included to manage activities that pose a high risk of attracting birds. And I'll speak to my recent conversations with Ms. Rayburn and Ms. Lawson. Amendments to the network utility chapter rule table. Ms. Lawson has provided you an update on that matter this morning and as she said, we're going to provide you some agreed wording in her write-up reply. Plan-wide consistency to managing height constraints under the OLS. I mean, I recommend amendments to the network utilities chapter to align with the approach taken across other zone chapters, such as the open spaces zones. Bike parking standard. The airport is a unique transport environment with over six hundred car parks provided on site, so requiring a ratio of bike parks, I just don't think is reasonable or practicable. And then my evidence in chief also responded to a few miscellaneous matters. Since I lodged my evidence in chief, I've had the benefit of reviewing evidence of the other submitters and rebuttal evidence from reporting officers as well as meeting with Ms. Rayburn and Ms. Lawson. The remainder of this statement responds to events that have occurred since my evidence was filed and is to assist the hearings panel. I will therefore comment on the following matters. Wildlife hazard management, responses to the panel's questions to reporting officers and pre-circulated opening statement on the airport zone. I have also provided an appendix A which shows in full some the recommended drafting updates to the appendix A attached to my evidence in chief. Before I continue, I'd just like to make a correction to my evidence in chief. I incorrectly referred to Ms. Rayburn as a reporting officer for the AESC chapter. She is in fact an independent planning expert on behalf of the regional Ahuriri Joint Park, Ahuriri Park Joint Committee. So turning now to wildlife hazard management. So I've met now with Ms. Rayburn and Ms. Lawson. During my meeting with Ms. Rayburn, we both agreed that there is a need to ensure bird strike hazard is managed in a way that does not undermine the purpose of the AESD. That purpose being stormwater management and detention. Ms. Rayburn has expressed her general support for the recommended amendments contained in my evidence in chief pertaining to the provision of a wildlife management plan. And however, we have discussed the need to further clarify when that standard applies to ensure clear and consistent implementation. Given the recommended standard relates to a number of activities of sort of different types, I recommend that the trigger be either the activity commencing or the commencement of preliminary earthworks, whichever occurs first. This also, this reflects that the commencement of some activities, such as the creation of a stormwater basement, can be clearly demarcated by the undertaking of earthworks. However, for some other types of activities, such as growing seedlings in pots, may not necessarily require earthworks. And I think it's also appropriate, given the comments that Gavin made, that wildlife management throughout the construction phase is also important. In addition, I recommend that further clarification is provided regarding the purpose of the wildlife management plan by linking it to the purpose of the recommended standard. I note that the provision of a plan to Napier City Council as a permitted standard is not unprecedented in this chapter. AESD S six, which relates to landscaping, also requires that a landscaping, planting and maintenance plan is provided and approved by the reserves manager. I therefore recommend a further amendment to standard ten, which is shown in green. And just for completeness, I'll note here that neither Ms. Lawson or Ms. Rayburn have raised concerns with me about the proposed activity status if this condition isn't complied with. In my view, the above recommended changes effectively and efficiently give effect to AESD O six, objective six, which relates to the protecting the efficient and safe operation of Hawke's Bay Airport. Ms. Lawson and I met yesterday afternoon. She has provided you an update in her opening statement this morning. And the update I've written there essentially aligns with what Ms. Lawson said this morning. Namely that we agree in principle that a plan-wide approach would make sense. And in that regard, some of the amendments recommended, for example, in the boat harbour zone, may not necessarily be required. So therefore, we consider it appropriate to go back and sort of dot our i's and cross the t's to make sure that we're doing it kind of consistent and removing any duplication. Some other benefits of a plan-wide approach, in my view, are adopting a plan-wide consistent approach now. Saves the panel having to rehash or reconsider this matter through subsequent hearings. And it also provides us an opportunity to review if there are any relevant further submissions to this matter. Turning now to the panel's questions and the section forty-two A author responses. In minute seven, the panel provided a list of questions for the authors of the section forty-two A reports. The respective reporting officers have provided their written responses to those questions. While my evidence in chief provides some commentary related to these topics, I will take this opportunity to expressly respond to the questions and responses most pertinent to the airport submissions. With regard to questions two and three about view shafts, I continue to rely on the evidence of Mr. Bray that the view shafts is notified and is recommended by the section forty-two A report of limited value to landscape values in the airport zone. Mr. Bray has tabled an alternative view shaft for the panel's consideration this morning. In my view, this view shaft should be supported with clear policy direction regarding its impact in decision-making. I note that non-airport activities located within the view shaft would be a discretionary activity under airport zone rule seven as per the section forty-two A report and my appendix A. So I remain of the view that a secondary rule table is not an effective or efficient way to manage activities within the view shaft. I'm open to working further with Ms. Beacon on this matter. With regard to question five, I remain of the opinion that a more simplified wording would more effectively and efficiently summarize the issue. This is the issue regarding, I think it's issue statement three, where the airport and Foreston Bird and the section forty-two A officer have suggested some different wordings for how to make sure that effects on wetlands are appropriately managed. In my view, it is not necessarily necessary to list the wide range of planning documents that must be considered under the RMA. With regard to question six, I agree with the reporting officer that there is no resource management reason to differentiate between airport activities and airport-related activities. This is consistent with my view set out in my evidence in chief. And finally, with regard to question eight, I can provide some further context on this matter. In their original submission, the airport noted that aircraft noise overlay, aircraft noise boundary, outer noise, outer ear noise overlay and outer control boundary were used inconsistently throughout the plan. They sought the deletion of the aircraft noise boundary map layer in reliance on the mapping of the outer control boundary. This one map layer would be referred to as the aircraft noise overlay. The substantive matter of whether to retain the aircraft noise boundary and the subsequent terminology to be used will be heard during the noise chapter hearing currently scheduled for May twenty twenty-five. In my view, the correct term will be identified during the course of that hearing and it is appropriate for the consequential amendments to be made to the airport zone chapter at that time to ensure cross-plan consistency. And finally, turning now to the remaining matters of contention in the airport zone. In her pre-circulated opening statement, Ms. Beacon has summarized the remaining matters of contention as management of landscape amenity effects in the airport zone, activities provided for within the airport zone and the management of those activities. I note that Ms. Beacon has reserved her position with regard to my recommended amendments to the issue statements, landscape sensitive control areas, activity status and management of activities in the airport zone. In that regard, my evidence on chief, chief, my evidence in chief on these matters stands. Ms. Beacon has also indicated she is open to work with the airport after the hearing regarding view shafts and the provision of office space in rules four, five and six. I'm available to work on these matters further with Ms. Beacon and any other manner, any other matters that the panel sees fit. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I've just got a couple. Just just, this is a flag for the hearing on noise. I'm familiar with some other plan provisions around airport noise and things, so the 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 matter of consistency generally across the nation in terms of managing noise around the airport will be of interest to me personally. So I just thought I'd flag that. In terms of the management on of industrial activities, is there full agreement now between yourself and the reporting officer on how industrial activities will be managed in the airport?
No, so I think based on the section forty-two A report officer's appendix A, activities which in my mind are broadly industrial in nature are currently, she recommends that they be restricted discretionary activities and I consider it would be appropriate to provide for those as permitted activities. And then in addition, there was the matter that I noted that the definition for heavy industrial is quite similar to the definition of industrial. I note that Napier City Council have actually put a submission on the heavy industrial definition, seeking that it be deleted. So that's sort of just a matter I wanted to flag is that depending on the outcome of that industrial zone hearing, that may impact the way that that rule is interpreted in the context of the airport zone. I haven't made recommendations on changes to those definitions as I haven't reviewed any other submissions of the airport zone, uh, the industrial zone.
Okay, thank you. And just just the question about view shafts, it's just sort of crossed my mind. View shafts are often, the origin, point of origin is usually in public vantage points. And whereas the suggestion by Mr. Bray there is from the airport terminal, which is arguably not a public vantage point in terms of access to it, especially out of hours. What's your sort of professional view on on the use of that as an origin?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot as well, as well as, I guess, the purpose of the view shaft being to maintain an outlook of the Western Hills. I think because, I guess, the terminal building in my mind and, I mean, Gavin and Nick may have a different opinion, but in my mind, they are sort of pseudo-public spaces where in theory, people, you know, visitors and meters and greeters can enter that space. So in theory, they're not being stopped from viewing, from enjoying that view, I guess. And I think in my mind, because the view shaft provisions only apply to the airport zone, if the airport is satisfied with their view shaft, I don't see an impediment to including it in the district plan. There are no provisions in the natural features and landscape chapter relating to view shafts. So that land outside the airport zone is not impacted in any way by the view shaft. The landscape values and that, I understand, are controlled by, for example, a height limit of three metres and other permitted standards like that. So yeah, so in summary, I think in my view, if the airport is satisfied with maintaining that view shaft, then I see no reason why it couldn't be included in the district plan.
And further to that, the terminal building is open to the public from six in the morning till nine thirty at night. And it's over time and the period of this, this plan is likely to be increased in terms of its opening hours rather than decreased.
One one other matter we discussed in considering this option was what would happen if, yeah, in any upgrades where, I guess, the specific location of the origin point of the view shaft were to change, but as far as I'm aware, the kind of core of the terminal wasn't expected to change significantly in the ten years of this plan, so.
I'll just add to that. I think in my experience working with view shafts, the the critical thing, the the origin point's important, but actually what's most critical is the description of what the view shaft is for. And that is not only what you are looking at, but where you are looking at it from. I think if that is very clearly defined, then if it means that some activity means that it needs to be moved for some reason, that the intent of the view shaft can be can be withheld because it's very clear what it's for.
Yes, and further to that, as I've stated, given that non-airport activities airside would require a discretionary consent in any case, I think it would be appropriate for quite clear and specific guidance to decision-makers to be given through a policy. And as Shannon has said, I think a key part of that policy would be to ensure that the purpose is really clear, so I guess development could occur there, but it would have to be in a way that was appropriate for the context and character of the airport. as well as maintaining views across to those Western Hills.
Okay, thank you. And just in terms of your comments that are around the plan-wide approach and the need to involve other reporting officers for other provisions, what's your intention around how that involvement and when that involvement is?
I guess, subject to the availability of reporting officers, I imagine that we would be able to provide some agreed wording in the right of reply, perhaps in Ms Lawson's Network Utilities chapter right of reply. Given that sort of the proposed approach is to establish, you know, a three kilometre, potentially an eight kilometre buffer around the airport, I think it's appropriate to just make sure that we're doing that properly and we're considering all the potential unintended consequences of imposing a rule for activities in other zones.
Okay. And just a final question, going back to the view shaft. Is the implementation of that contained to the airport zone? Is that the intention?
That's my understanding of-
Right. So it wouldn't affect land outside the airport zone?
Unless the view shafts were to be inserted into, or provisions relating to the view shafts were inserted into the natural features and landscape chapter. They're, I guess, bound to the geographic extent of the airport zone.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Thank you. Thank you all for your submissions. I guess mine is less of a question for you and more for staff. I'm just interested to explore if we were of a mind around the framework of the chapter requiring some amendment as suggested in the submitter's evidence, what that could look like. So I'm just, I think I'm interested in some options around what a framework might look like that better meets the needs that they're requesting.
Are you asking this in relation to the bird strike management?
No, I'm asking this in relation to the objectives, the issues and objectives. So point A under 1.5.
I hope this is the reporting officer and we'll be able to respond. She's online.
Lovely. Even if it's just part of staff reply, that's fine. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, thank you very much for your evidence. Just again, following up on the view shaft provisions, I was going to ask you how you saw those provisions working in terms of the new view shaft that's been recommended to us by Mr Bray this morning. From your answer, I'd take it, are you looking at amending Policy Six and Rule Nine in terms of the further work you're going to be doing?
I think, yeah, that's something I haven't turned my mind to in detail, whether perhaps a standalone policy would be appropriate just to make sure that sufficient detail can be included in that policy without convolating the existing provisions or as I've recommended them. And then I don't think amendment would be required to Rule Nine, given that it's a discretionary activity. So the council already has full discretion over any matters. And at the time of preparing an application, the airport or whoever was the applicant, that would be a matter that they would necessarily need to turn their mind to identifying that they are located within that view shaft or not.
I think Rule Nine's a restricted discretionary activity.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, in my version, yeah, oh, Rule Nine. Sorry, my advice is to delete that secondary rule table in its entirety. So there would be no rule, there would be no restricted discretionary rule specifically for the view shaft. The view shaft would only be given effect to through policy. One of the reasons for that is because non-airport activities already require a discretionary consent in that area. And the second reason is airport activities would most likely occur as a permitted activity under the designation. And if they were to occur as a permitted activity under Rule One, in my view, any landscape effects they have are essentially part of the existing environment, given the designation. And as Mr Bray has pointed out, activities that are for airport purposes are likely to be of a nature that is consistent with the character of the airport zone. So unlikely to have significant effects on the landscape values.
Yep. So if we were to accept your recommendation to delete Rules Eight and Nine, which rule would then cover activities within the view shaft?
So it would be picked up through Rule Seven, which is recommended to be a discretionary activity. So that's activities not otherwise provided for and Rule Eight, which is heavy industrial activities. And any activities that didn't comply with permitted standards under Rule One. I note that Rules Three, yeah, Three, Four, Five and Six are only permitted or restricted discretionary within the airport business precinct, which is land side. So are not within the area of the proposed view shaft. So it doesn't need to be considered for those activities.
Now, just turning to your primary evidence, have you got that available? Like you've just attended paragraph 7.78?
Regarding Policy Seven?
Yes.
In my printed version, it's quite hard to read, but-
Yeah, I'm looking on screen, so I don't have that issue. Just a couple of sort of pedantic points about the wording. You say, "As regard to the identified landscape values, including..." So just remind me, is the red font yours or the officer's?
Red font is the officer's and blue font was my recommendation.
So if we were to go with the word "including" as recommended by the officers, then one, two and three would be a subset of the identified landscape values. Where in the plan would those landscape values be identified in full?
Schedule, let me just pull it up on my screen. There is a schedule that sets out, describes all the landscape values. Schedule of special character landscapes. And the Te Fanganui Auroto special character landscape is SCL 01. In my Appendix A, I've included that in full alongside some recommended amendments which align with the evidence of Mr Bray. Those recommended amendments are to ensure that the existence of the airport as a built infrastructure is appropriately recognised as being a part of the existing environment.
And so what was the name of that schedule again?
Schedule of special character landscapes.
Yeah. And what was its number?
SCL 01.
Just a query about just some of the words there. If you look at Clause One, integrity and legibility of individual features, and I'm just thinking about future decision makers trying to understand what's required of them. I'm not sure how as a decision maker I would ensure the integrity of an individual feature because that's not affected by an activity within the airport zone because these features are outside that. And legibility, I take to understand, just simply means visibility of the features. Is that what it means?
So I, this wording was informed by the ISMS report. So maybe, Shannon, would you have an opinion on the best way to interpret those terms?
Yeah, physical integrity is, yeah, not digging it up. Yeah, legibility is the ability to see it, but also understand what it is by seeing it. So for example, the watchman, it's understanding that by looking at it, you can see that it was once an island that has remained and is separated from the hills to the background, for example. So the legibility of its formation.
So I'm not sure how development could ensure that. I mean, either is or it isn't. So I guess I have an issue with Clause One. Clause Two, I can understand openness of the landscape. As a decision maker, I'd understand what was required of me there. And then visual connectivity to the various features, again, just in my mind, that would mean, can I see them? So I was wondering if you could just give some thought to simplifying that your recommended amendments to Policy Seven, just to put it into language that a decision maker would be able to deal with.
Yes, certainly. I'll consider that and provide some wording back to the panel after the hearing.
And now I've just got to cup one question just about the, your tabled amendment to AESZ standard 10, big A3 page that we've been given this morning?
Yep.
Yep. So my only issue regarding, or my question to you is regarding the purpose statement. So I understand how activities in terms of the bird strike issue should be compatible with the safe operation of the airport. But I'm not sure how activities can be required to be compatible with the efficient operation of the airport, which to me would be something outside the realm of a decision maker considering bird strike activities that's more related to the airport's activities within their facilities. So do we need the words efficient? Or do we need the word efficient?
Yeah, that's a matter I'd like to consider further. For example, and Damian may be able to speak to this further. For example, I guess the efficient operation of the airport can be impacted by having to manage the bird strike. For example, Damian has told me of an example recently where seagulls from, have been, I guess, feeding in other areas around the airport and then on cold rainy nights coming and settling on the warm tarmac. And then that requires the airport to go out and shoo them all away before a plane can take off. And so I guess management responses like that, which are potentially originating from a habitat outside the airport's control, are causing them the potential to delay flights in order to respond to the risk of bird strike. Whether that is already appropriately covered by the word "safe", I'd like to consider further.
The only thing I would add is that the efficiency is not only the airport operations within its fence, it's making sure that flight paths are efficient and aren't going around bird habitats. Because that would lead to significant issues in operating an airfield. So just adding to Alan's point, it's about the flight path into and out of an aerodrome rather than just the activities on an airfield. And that's where the efficiency comes in.
All right. Now, thank you for that. They're both helpful answers. So in light of that, I'm less concerned about the word "efficient". Thank you. Look, I didn't have any further questions, but I just wanted to again compliment you on the comprehensive and helpful nature of your evidence. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I don't have any further questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time.
I have some copies of that. Do you need those or? I use that would be helpful, thank you, Bray. So our next submitter are the various joint statements of evidence and submissions for the various telecommunications companies. So welcome again. We have had the pleasure of your company before in another hearing, so thank you for that. So I would imagine Mr McCarrison, you'll sort of lead the charge initially, or Mr Anderson?
Actually, Mr Anderson is going to lead the charge so that we can get straight into the planning matters and then Andrew Cantor and myself can answer any questions that you may have.
Because you're in person now, not online, as the schedule says. Who do we have? Do we have anyone online?
Not today, no. And I'm unable to have Ms Matthews of Conex or or Mr Cologne of Forty South join us. So we are presenting them.
Yes, that's fine. Okay. Well, Mr Anderson, please lead the charge.
Certainly. So just to confirm, I've read the summaries of the 42A reports for network utilities and stormwater. And I note the network utilities reporting officer amendment, recommended amendment to the introduction to improve clarity in line with the submission point that we sought and agree with that. However, the remaining matters in our submission remain in contention and I'll touch on those very briefly before we can move into any questions the panel may have. The first point relates to the airport zone, if we've just been hearing from, and that's clarity as to how network utilities are provided for in that zone in NU Rule Four, and specifically requesting the removal of Point One of the permitted activity standard, which I don't think is clear and difficult to determine whether or not a resource consent is required around the primary or ancillary function of a network utility. I think this, in my view, all network utilities that service any zone are only there because they're related to the function of that zone. So I don't think that statement adds anything. And then the matters outlined, standards, and the standards are appropriate controls. Turning to a rule in NU 11, seeking better recognition that effects from temporary network utilities exist only for a limited time. I also seek a new rule seeking improved alignment between the PDP and the NESTF. That's the National Environmental Standard for Telecommunications Facilities. Seeking controlled activity standards for antenna which marginally breach the permitted standards in that NESTF. A primary focus really is an amendment to NU S3, which is about pole height, considering the functional and operational requirements and I guess the health and safety of antenna and radio frequency when it comes to pole heights versus the permitted building heights in the zone. There's also a reverse sensitivity matter at play there. And the primary example for that is in the high-density zone where the permitted building height is significantly higher than the permitted pole height, meaning that a building could be built in front of an antenna, rendering it unusable and therefore creating such a reverse sensitivity effect. And a further amendment to NU S3 recognising the lack of ability to require certifications for permitted activities. An amendment to NU S4 recognising appropriate building footprints for network utilities. And I've taken the reporting officer's point concerning residential zones when it comes to character and amenity effects. However, I'm not sure that that applies to industrial zones and the like. The removal of NU S5 to avoid unnecessary duplication with existing regulation and process. And a key consideration there is around the National Environmental Standards for Telecommunications Facilities, again, which directs that poles and cabinets can be located in roads as a permitted activity. And there is a well-known, thorough and understood process in terms of corridor access requests and council approval or NZTA approval as road controlling authority to control matters such as sightlines. And finally, an amendment to Stormwater Rule Three, again, to provide better alignment with the NESTF when it comes to natural hazards. And there's a small amendment to my, or clarity to my evidence there in that the only activity type which is not regulated under the NES and therefore falls within the ambit of Stormwater Rule Three are new poles in private sites or outside of legal road in urban areas. Every other activity type is regulated under the NES and is therefore exempt from having to comply with any district plan rules concerning natural hazards. So seeking, I guess, a consistent playing field when it comes to the application of telecommunications facilities in natural hazard areas. in natural hazard areas. That is my brief summary and happy to answer any questions, unless there's anything you'd like me to explore in further detail.
Well, just to clarify, the diagrams you show in your figures two and three on page nineteen.
Yes.
They're great salt dye illustrations, but could you perhaps talk them a little bit further? Just to clarify what they're showing?
So figure two is outdoor coverage from masts of different heights. The different colors within those diagrams, the blue is excellent coverage, graduating through the green, the yellow and the red to pour. On the left-hand side, we have what an eight meter high mast would do. And the mast is shown as a green dot in the center of each of those three pictures. And then a fourteen meter and a twenty meter high mast. So the difference in signal strength and quality. So the ability to use a mobile device or wireless internet in a premise, whether that be a business or home, its efficiency increases with height.
Is it showing also the clutter around it in terms of obstacles?
That's right.
The clear line of sight?
Yes.
There's clutter?
Yes.
In the vicinity, I can't.
That's right. And the bottom diagrams are essentially the same, but it's the indoor coverage as opposed to the outdoor. So where the indoor coverage can reach from higher facilities.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Anderson?
Yes. A minute. Just in relation to your paragraph twenty-four and the recommended amendment to N U R four.
Yes.
I should have asked Ms. Robotham and she was here, but I didn't. Have you talked to the airport about the, your recommended deletion of clause one?
No.
Could you do so, please? I'd just be interested in the view of the airport. To my mind, that clause one is primarily intended to not so much protect the airport's activities, but to constrain activities within that zone to airport-related activities. And I'd be interested just in the view of the airport on your recommendation to delete that clause, if you could come back to us on that.
No problem.
Yep. So it's just a minor point, got to be interested in that.
Yes.
And the only other question I wanted to ask you was at your paragraph ninety-seven.
Spare with me a moment while I.
For that.
Yes. Stormwater rule three.
So in terms of your recommended note, the clause three in the note, regarding it doesn't apply to any lines or poles. So just to clarify, you're saying that's provided for in the N E S. Is that what you said before?
Yes, apart from the pole. So I can come back to you with revised wording on that. So and that revised wording would essentially be the same. Just would say stormwater rule three does not apply to any telecommunications poles. And then the footprint doesn't really apply to a pole. It's more of a diameter measure. But building structures, lines are all provided for under the N E S T F and the exemption that regulation fifty-seven offers.
So the words that are currently there, building structures with a footprint of less than ten meters squared, you're saying that's not needed anymore?
That's not needed, no, that was an oversight on my behalf.
Okay, all right, well, that's good. I don't need to ask you some questions about that then. All right, now that was all, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Just in terms of it being a note, obviously a note doesn't have any kind of statutory or legal effect. Are you satisfied that a note is sufficient? Or do you think it should be a condition of the rule? Or is a note sufficient in your view?
There are different ways that it's been done and different plans. And I'm trying to find the most efficient way to work with the structure of each plan that's been offered. For example, the gore district council, district plan, which we're having a hearing for in a couple of days' time on the same matter, it's an exemption at the outset of the chapter, which I think is is a more efficient way of doing it because you read upfront that there's no need to consider telecommunications infrastructure. However, here, the way the plans work with stormwater is it's a much wider issue than just natural hazards, whereas the gore ones are natural hazards. So I'm trying to work within the only applicable rule. It could work as point three under rule three A, where it says this does not apply to telecommunications poles. But I am comfortable that the note is clear in terms of the rules application.
All right, and thank you for that. And just in terms of retaining it as a note, could you expand the note just so a future decision maker reading the plan would understand why?
Sure.
Doesn't apply to the pole. So it does not apply to poles because they are covered by the. I think that would be helpful. All right, thanks. That's all I wanted to clarify with you, but thanks for your evidence.
Okay.
Thank you.
You heard my questioning around the hyperlinking thing. So just picking up again.
Please.
I had a question for the reporting officer around how many hyperlinks are being envisaged at the head of the chapter. So you're comfortable now to have the network utilities chapter not a one-stop shop?
I am, yes.
Provided.
Yeah.
As that hyperlink.
That direction is crucial for that comfort.
And the question I had was, was the hyperlink to a chapter? Or was it the particular provisions?
Provisions.
So specific provisions? And how many, are you able to say how many hyperlinks are required?
Not off the top of my head.
Are there dozens of them or just?
No, I don't think it is dozens. I think this was something that came to me quite late in the writing of my evidence. And started to sketch them out, but I haven't, didn't have time to complete it, unfortunately, before the lodgment of the evidence. I'm happy to work with the forty-two A officer, however, to highlight those.
Because at the one level, I can understand a direct, specific hyperlink to a specific rules helpful for a plan user. But on the other hand, I could see it could lend up as a huge complicated couple web of hyperlinks.
Yeah. I don't think it will be overly complex. There are specific infrastructure rules in most of those earthwork subdivisions, site of significance to Maori chapters which would apply. So I don't envisage it being sort of a wild. Hyperlinking situation. I think it would be targeted and be one or two rules in each of those chapters. Top of my head, I think probably just the one rule.
One or two chapters?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Thank you very much.
It wasn't long, it wouldn't matter, would it? It still helped.
Ah, I could just see it listing down the page, but all the things, but yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Just confirm my. Just making sure I had all my homework written down.
Yes, all right. Mr. Stickney, would you like to join us? Table?
Thank you, everyone.
If you just give us a moment to. Get it all teed up.
Well, welcome, Mr. Stickney, again. We have your pre-circulated evidence, so thank you very much for that. But the floor is yours to talk to the key points you'd like to make.
Sure. Look, this will be relatively succinct today. I do just want to flag in terms of the transportation rule that Mana Ahuriri have submitted on, I'm conscious that we've got the hearing for now Ahuriri Station and Severn Prebisson Precincts coming up later in the year. So I do want to set the scene on the tone of that submission point in relation to the ITAs and traffic generation rules. Discussing it though with the team, we think it will be helpful for the panel to set the scene today, but then to be able to provide more detail on the implications of that rule in the context of more detailed information about the Severn and Prebisson precinct in particular, just to provide further examples. So I trust that's appropriate in terms of thinking ahead.
It's fine. Thank you.
I'll jump to part five of my evidence, if I may. In a similar vein to the Papa Kainga in hearing stream one, Mana Ahuriri are seeking to widen the definition of the Maori Purpose Zone. And inherent in that definition and provisions, a recognition that the use of the land will inevitably evolve over time. And I'm conscious that it's a limited number of sites, but that's driving the widening of the definition which is sought. The recommendation from the reporting planner is to accept in part the relief sought by including arts, cultural centers and research facilities into that definition. And the rationale appears to be in the forty-two A report that some of those activities, the other activities are more appropriate to consider separately and also that they're already covered in the district-wide chapters of the plan. Coming back to the submission that we lodged, I'm not entirely able to follow the rationale taken. If those activities are effectively also then envisaged for the MPZ, subject to compliance with specific rules and standards, there shouldn't be any issue with including them as activities captured by the definition itself. That doesn't mean that specific standards can't be applied to those activities for the Maori Purpose Zone, i.e. permitted activity standards that are specific to each activity within the definition if needed. But I think then it aids in usability of the plan and also enables Mana Fenawa to meet their economic, cultural and social needs for that particular, particular zone. So breaking it, breaking it down effectively in a nutshell, capture as much as we can in the definition that accords to the relief sought by Mana Ahuriri. And the definition as it's currently drafted and been partially amended by the reporting planner, there are a list of cultural activities in there and other, other events, hui, et cetera. Looking at those, I think they could actually be condensed and simplified rather than perhaps the list that we currently have. And that is effectively sought by the submission where it talks about the definition capturing Maori cultural activities. So it captures it in a nutshell. And then obviously adding the other activities that Mana Ahuriri sought in there. So I think there is possibly a halfway house to condense some of those down and to assess those other activities to go into the definition. In terms of how that would work in the rules, as I said, if those are captured in the definition, then there is the option to link them to district-wide standards for those particular activities, Papa Kainga, et cetera, if those are going to work for that particular site. Or you can then have for some of the other activities, if deemed appropriate, and there are already some in the plan, specific performance standards for those activities in the Maori Purpose Zone and specific performance standards for bespoke activities within the zone. So there is the option to link if we want to, if that's appropriate, or to have specific provisions for the Maori Purpose Zone in relation to those activities. I think that the intent of this is really that the focus of the emphasis in the planning report, and I don't disagree with it, is on that cultural narrative and gathering and cultural activities for the zone. I think where Mana Ahuriri are now looking ahead in the future is the ability to also enable some development of other activities on those sites that can fulfill perhaps a broader purpose over time. So while I support the amendments that have been made in the section forty-two A report in terms of the definition, I'm still of the view that those additional activities could be added and there could be a bit of a restructure of some of the more cultural activities and condensed down further. I also sought, or Mana also sought, and this is under six point three of my evidence, to add another policy in the plan. And that really captures that need for the ability for Iwi to undertake comprehensive, coordinated and efficient development on that land, which currently is not inherently recognized in the objectives and policies framework for the zone. And I think that's just a function of the intent of the zone is currently envisaged. So in the same way that we are looking at the urban development aspirations of Maori on other sites for Mana Ahuriri, they want to see a similar philosophy embedded into the Maori Purpose Zone to enable future development to be efficient and recognize and enable for that to take place. And that currently hasn't been recommended for inclusion in the section forty-two A, forty-two A report. In terms of part seven of my statement, I see there has been some changes there to the recommended changes to the inclusion of home businesses in the Maori Purpose Zone chapter. And I'm also, which is supported, and I'm also comfortable now with the general cascade of activity status from permitted to then restricted discretionary in terms of non-compliances. So I've got no issue with that. Just to close out on that, and I had started some discussions on this matter in terms of possibly looking to provide the panel with a draft of some changes where we see consolidation of the current provisions and the addition of those and some assessment. Unfortunately, time got the better of me before the hearing today and I apologize for that. But certainly Mana Ahuriri would be amenable to providing that to the panel and the reporting offices in the same way that we did with the Papa Kainga chapter and some further dialogue of that, if that would help provide a more consolidated set of provisions for the panel and their deliberations. So I make that offer.
Would be useful, Mr. Anderson, if you could.
Yep, all right. Thank you. Just turning to submission point eight, transport. And as I said, this is one that further technical evidence will be forthcoming on this. And this is in respect of rules triggering integrated transport assessments to be prepared and the threshold for activities, four hundred vehicles per day and two hundred respectively. The focus of the submission is really on the four hundred vehicles per day. And I'm aware that other district plans, unitary plans around the country do have these similar rules incorporated. Flurb will correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anything in the operative plan at the moment that requires these ITAs to be undertaken. And I do understand the rationale for them. But just from Mana's perspective and obviously an interest in the large format retail zone, particularly along the Severn and Prebisson area, and obviously seeking some changes to that. Those activities, as regulated by the plan as proposed, they require large floor plates for buildings, a thousand square meters as a permitted activity. And as a retail proposition, individually or cumulatively, they're going to generate a large turnover of vehicles. In fact, they need that to sustain the scale of operation within the zone. And it is recognized that that is predominantly a private vehicle trip generating type of, type of location and activity. And also potentially supermarkets and other anchor stores within other commercial zones in the city will be impacted by the rule. Particularly in the case of L F R, it does seem with the standards and the way they're structured, counterintuitive to enable large scale or require large-scale floor plates and retail to establish in that zone in the L F R, but then include the blanket trip generation figure that applies irrespective of the type of activity that's occurring. And importantly, moves the activity from potentially being permitted to being restricted discretionary. So I think my view is, as the rules are currently structured, they're somewhat crude and blunt trigger and need to be refined further in terms of. and need to be refined further in terms of those types of activities. There are a number of ways of dealing with this. And I also should note for the panel that the subdivision chapter, in my experience with the Napier Plan also in terms of large-scale subdivision, is that that often requires you at the outset to consider the effects of traffic generation. And I've, under 8.7, I've taken the controlled activity assessment matters of control there. And I've highlighted those ones that are in bold text, the ones that are actually probably relevant to what we are looking at now. Going through those processes and recent subdivisions, Fararangi Road in particular, which was a large residential development, that required traffic modelling and an assessment of the level of traffic that would be generated by the subdivision. And as part of that, measures were put in place for new roundabouts, upgrades to roundabouts and other access requirements. So from, in many cases, that can already be dealt with, will be dealt with through the subdivision consent. That can then be embedded in conditions of consent or similarly consent notices on the titles to issue in respect of the scale of activities that may take place. And we're finding now with Napier, and it's fair and reasonable that obviously the link between subdivision and land use and council officers are asking us questions about the end use and trip generation at that stage of the process, which I think is entirely appropriate to do. So the challenge then is if we've been through that process for a subdivision and noting at the moment that the LFR zone as it currently stands and sought to be extended is actually insignificant as in large titles, so it will need to be subdivided further down. If we've dealt with this traffic issue at that stage, there may be a way that we can have a mechanism whereby if there are controls already embedded in a consent condition or consent notices on the title, that the requirement for the ITA may be able to be bypassed. Similarly, it may be that, and that's where we'll provide further evidence, is a better sliding scale relative to LFR, say as opposed to industrial, as opposed to residential, may be able to be introduced into the plan. But my concern is that we will go through a subdivision process and deal with those upgrades as required and the assessment of what is needed. Those will be agreed, conditioned. And then when, if a land use consent is required or similarly a large-scale building goes on where it is going to generate more than 400 vehicle movements a day, we're back to having an ITA provided or required when traffic generation has already been factored in. So we'll be looking at providing more evidence through traffic engineering on that issue, particularly in respect of the LFR. So that's it in a nutshell today by way of summary. I hope that sets the scene on the transportation rule. Just some options there, but our concerns about where that fits in the process and particularly in relation to the subdivision assessment criteria, which are entirely robust and appropriate for capturing that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr Stickney. You may or may not be aware that we did identify through a minute, eight I think it was, the 16th of July as a potential date.
Correct.
To hear the rezoning. We might have to reschedule that because of the availability of one of the commissioners. So, but you'll be contacted about that.
Thank you.
We'll try and find a date as soon as possible around that time. Just the definition issue for me, because the submission had a recommended replacement definition for Maori Purpose Activities.
Correct.
And it basically was a list of things. Are you, are you resiling from that and proposing a simplified version of it?
I think this, yeah, this was on the basis of reviewing again the definition in the 42A report and where that had landed. And when I went back through that, I was looking at a number of aspects in there which are still relevant and perhaps should be listed separately, but also a number that could be consolidated. So I think not resiling from the relief that we have sought, but I think there's a way to accommodate the relief we've sought and what is in the 42A report in a reasonably, should be a reasonably simple way.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from the panel?
Yeah, just a couple. You mentioned verbally that you're willing to provide what you called a consolidated set of provisions. I presume that was in relation to the rules and standards. Would it also include your preferred wording for the definition of Maori Purpose Activity?
Correct, yes, yep.
And just what did you envisage in terms of a consolidated set of provisions? Just what's the broad outline of what you were thinking?
I think in terms of the 42A report, the list of activities that are currently in there which relate to gatherings, hui, customer activities, various cultural activities, condensing those down. And then probably looking at between the definition and the 42A report in relation to those other activities, then looking to reconcile those with the activities that were sought in the submission. And then have some discussion with, if Flu is comfortable and, I'm sure they will be, is have some discussion on whether that captures the intent of the zoning for both parties. So I think it's really more the cultural aspects could be condensed so that that provides inherent flexibility for Mana Fenawa in terms of the types of activities culturally that they may want to hold on those sites.
All right, I'm sure we look forward to receiving that. I just ask you to bear in mind that obviously the consolidated provisions would need to be clear and certain so that.
Correct.
The decision makers down the track.
Correct.
Don't need to wonder what the wording means.
Yep.
All right, just a couple of other minor issues. You have paragraph 6.4. You say in the middle there, the policy sought in submission has not been recommended for inclusion, but rather a change has been recommended to MPZ P1. I don't think the officers did recommend a change to policy one.
I think that was in the original. In the right of, in the officer's right of reply, there's been an addition to MPZ P1. And that just relates to while ensuring actual or potential adverse effects of activities are avoided, remedied or mitigated.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so it's not.
Was that in the answers to our questions or?
It doesn't, yeah, capture the relief that we're seeking. But yeah, we've had some discussion about that.
All right, sorry. Just in terms of this traffic issue. So is Mana Ahereri requesting an amendment to TPT S7? It's not quite clear what you're asking us.
In terms of the traffic generation rule?
Yeah.
Correct, yep. Yep, and that's something that we'll provide more detailed evidence on in the context of that hearing. And as I say, really today, it's to set the scene in terms of the challenges with the rule and where it triggers in the development process. Subdivision often precedes the land use that follows, as you'll be well aware of. But also whether there's a way of, and I know other parties have submitted on this as well, of providing a more nuanced scale for ITA trip generation. I recognise there will be times when you have an existing site that is sitting ready to go. So appreciate that we do need to be able to capture both scenarios.
Yeah, it's just that this hearing is the hearing for considering amendments to TPT S7. So when are we going to see your recommended amendments for that provision?
Well, the intention was to provide those with the, put them in the context of the LFR zoning. So, but actually it would be the Severn Prebithin hearing. So July is currently when that's scheduled. And it was our intention to provide more evidence at that stage in line with other engineering matters as well for the rezoning.
Is that appropriate or would we need it now?
Yes, a good question Commissioner asks in terms of, because we are addressing that chapter of the plan at the moment. And it would be good to have a specific kind of recommended or relief sought with the wording of that. Rather than leaving it to that hearing, particularly the hearing. So if you could address it in your reply back to our questions.
Sure. Okay, I'll talk to the team.
And just in terms of that, in your evidence, you have paragraph 8.7, you refer to SUB AC1. And I think in your verbal comments, you suggested to us that that was sufficient to capture effects of developments on the safe and efficient operation of the network. My response to that would be, in my view, SUB AC1 is deficient in that regard. It doesn't include the word safe and efficient operation of the network, contrary to the provisions in STPT S7, which matters of discretion are the safety and efficiency of the integrated transport network. So I don't think SUB does do the job. And if you're looking to use that as an example, I'd encourage you not to and to come up with some more specific wording, particularly that that's already in TPT S7.
I'll have a look at that.
Yeah. But other than that, yeah, wait with interest your consolidated suite of provisions.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, if you have any questions, it's really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Stickney.
Just in terms of timeframe for coming back to you, we should probably nominate a date. Would you, by your leave, would a fortnight from today be too long? Or would that be okay for us to have drafted? Probably Flu and the team have a discussion and then get back? Or would you like that to be sooner?
From Simmons, are you comfortable with a two week?
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
From today? Okay, thank you. No, no, we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr Stickney.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will take a break for lunch now and was spot on schedule. So thank you for that. We will resume after lunch, except that I have recused myself from hearing Transpower. So we will have Commissioner Lambert join the panel to hear Transpower submissions. And then I will rejoin when the Port of Napier attend the hearing at schedule for two o'clock. So with that in mind, the hearing is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Till 1.30.